Good evening.
Welcome to Charter Township of Van Buren Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, April 10th of 2019. We'll start with the roll call, please. Ms. Harmon?
Joan Fransway.
Here.
Jeff Jar.
Here.
Donald Boynton.
Here.
Brian Kelly's excuse. Medina Atchinson.
Here.
Sherri Budd.
Here.
Carol Thompson.
Here. Thank you so much. The agenda before us is your motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Boynton, support?
Support.
Commissioner Jar, I'll take it for any additions or changes to the agenda. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. And we have minutes from the regular meeting of March 27th of 2019. Is there a motion to approve the March 27th minutes?
I make a motion we approve the regular meeting minutes of March 27th as presented.
Support.
Commissioner Budd, support Commissioner?
Me.
Sorry, Boynton. All right. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? All in favor of approving the March 27th, 2019 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. First item on tonight's agenda, this is under new business. It's Project Sycamore here for a final site plan approval. The applicant, Mr. Julian Beglin, is requesting final site plan approval for site development for a visitor and vehicle receiving center building, associated improvements, and site hardening for security purposes for a data center, excuse me, data center use. The address is 9,000 Hagerty Road. The property is located on the northwest corner of Hagerty Road and Tyler Road. And first, we'll hear from Mr. Beglin.
Well, thank you. I'm back again. And, yeah, appreciate your time this evening. Again, my name is Julian Beglin with HF Lens, representing JPMC. Also have Robert Sherman here with DLZ. They're our landscape architect on the project. And we did have some working changes, so I've invited him along, hopefully, to answer some of those questions.
Great.
So what I'd like to do is just bring you up to speed on where we are with our site plan approval, as far as the changes we've made since last time we met. And I will do them fairly, just as an overview, really just to account for the major changes that we've made in order to try and satisfy some of the questions and concerns of your planner and engineer. Basically, some of these items are minor, and we've made those changes, and I'm going to show you what we did on a plan to do that. The more, sort of more inclusive, bigger issues that we basically addressed is, in the engineering letter that we received from Fishbeck that was with respect to the sanitary main depth, we have adjusted the elevation of the lead that comes from the public sanitary. We've got it down deeper. It is a challenge because there's lots of things in the way, and so it's very much a finding a happy medium. We're trying to get it deep enough that we frost protect it, but we don't create another problem trying to get underneath other utilities and infrastructure. So we have made attempts to do that, and I've actually been in conversations with both Dave Potter and their group, and we believe we've reached an agreement on that. With respect to the water main service, we completely agree with the comments one, two, and three. We're going to identify valve boxes, basically, are to the standards of the authority. And we are going to, we've come to consensus that our method of going underneath the very high berm that's in the front there by protecting it with a Schedule 80 casing pipe, end seals, and casing spacers. And then we have provided a gate valve well at the location of the public pipe so that the public side is protected when we make our tap. With respect to storm sewers, we've identified that the storm sewer pipe shall be Class 5 reinforced concrete to meet the standards of the township and protect it for the extra soil load that it will see. And then the only other items are really administrative. Those were the receiving our soil and erosion sedimentation control permit, which is pending for the county permit. And there's a small update on the county permit. We are in our final round of comments that we're down to one page of comments, which is quite an accomplishment after the several pages we've been going through. So we believe we, well, I suppose, and unfortunately, that fell through because of some conflicts, and so I believe that will happen tomorrow. And then I think it's just administrative with them also. So we would just ask for that to be a condition of an approval this evening. With respect to planning, I think the majority of the planning comments were administrative. We really didn't have any that were major. The landscaping was probably one of the more confusing ones, is trying to get to a common point with that. And that's why I have Rob here. He's going to speak to that when, once staff have made their comments, we can address any questions. And then beyond that, I want to show you what we did with the building. I have some final renderings that reflect the changes we've made.
So this is just a black and white of each face of the building, and the reason I brought that is I'm going to show you. These new renderings are to emphasize why we can and cannot quite accomplish what we're being asked to with the, with respect to the building elevations.
Hold on, hold on for a second, Mr. Beglin. Let's get you a microphone because now you are, can't be heard by everyone, including anyone watching at home.
I could probably stand back at the microphone if you want. Just move to these.
Nope, this will work for us. And let me also say, anyone in the audience who wants to get up from your seat and see the renderings, please feel free. We're a little challenged on our viewpoints here. Thank you.
Can you hear me through the speaker?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So what we did is, we addressed the fact that the south elevation, which is the elevation of the VVRC building along Hagerty Road, was a very plain, didn't have any architectural content. And so what we did is we added these windows along this edge, which is the actual building component of the side of the structure. The issue we had with adding any further windows to that elevation was these two wing walls. They are merely, basically, just an extension with nothing behind them to try and provide some screening to the dock on both sides. And so what we've done is we've just put these in the building portion, but we've extended some of these lines, and that's what the, these latest drawings show, is some architectural lines reflected by these colored lines here to try and give some content and tie in the color scheme that we have back at the main building.
Are the colors integrated into block or painted, or do you know?
So these are cast panels, and so they are a brick textured panel with, they're actually masonry, so yes, they are colored from the factory. They arrived that way and assembled on site. And so what I wanted to show you here, we didn't have these reflected before, is we have our secure fence on this side and our semi-secure fence on this side. So you can see that this decorative fence, it doesn't really take away from the look of things, it really enhances it. So you can see, you know, we'll have some plantings. They might not look exactly like this, but once it's matured, there'll be a softening effect from the landscape plantings.
Okay. Certainly.
Are those, are those windows, windows, or are they a facade?
I believe they are full-blown window, and that we put them up high enough somewhat to mirror the way the windows are on the other side of the building. Obviously, you cannot see both sides of the west and the east side at the same time, so the fact that they're not quite identical hopefully isn't too much of a concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the building changes? Anything else right now, Mr. Beglin?
No, with that, I yield back to you, and thank you again.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it. We'll go to Mr. Sloan, McKenna Associates, for your review, please.
At the March 13th Planning Commission meeting, the site plan received preliminary site plan approval from the Planning Commission, subject to several planning and engineering conditions. And our review letter of April 2nd goes through those conditions, at least the planning conditions, and addresses each one in terms of whether the site plan complies. Altogether, we reviewed 14 different planning commissions that were from the preliminary site plan review, and we find that the majority of those conditions have been met. We'll, I'll describe in a little bit more detail in our recommendation those that require just a little bit more information. Our recommendation is that the final site plan be approved, subject to five conditions to be reviewed administratively. And most of those conditions are fairly minor, and having them reviewed administratively won't really alter the complexion and the design of the site plan. Before getting into the conditions, I just want to note some additional information that we received from the applicant's landscape architect, and it relates to the first condition regarding the tree counts along Tyler and Hagerty Roads. And there was a discrepancy between the plan sheets that showed the landscaping and the sheet that had the table. Specifically, it's sheet L-3002 that includes the table, and some of the counts on the table are different than what's on the plans themselves. And so what the applicant is proposing to do is to modify the table to reflect what's counted on the plan. What the plan shows is that although there is a deficiency along the Tyler Road frontage for the frontage landscaping based on the site visibility, those trees and shrubs that are required along Tyler Road have been reallocated along Hagerty Road. So in essence, those trees and shrubs are there, they've just been relocated to a different frontage. Specifically, it will be 24 deciduous or evergreen trees, 13 ornamental trees, and 263 shrubs required along the Tyler Road frontage that are now relocated to the Hagerty Road frontage. So the first condition in our letter would change. First off, the applicant is not asking for a waiver from the requirement because the trees and shrubs are shown on the plan. It would rather just be a modification in terms of the location of those trees and shrubs. So I'll get into the specific text of that in a moment. Under the second condition, we had recommended some additional details on the architectural elevations, and also request the applicant to consider the addition of a horizontal band of windows on the east facade of the VVRC building. However, if the facade is accepted as presented, then that last part of the condition would be removed from the second condition of our letter, and then the other conditions would remain. So our modified recommendation is to recommend final site plan approval of the proposed Project Sycamore, subject to the following items being satisfactorily addressed prior to the issuance of any permits. And there are five conditions. The first one, we modify to read as follows. To allow the required 24 deciduous or evergreen trees, 13 ornamental trees, and 263 shrubs required along the Tyler Road frontage to be relocated to the Hagerty Road frontage, and that sheet L-3002 be revised accordingly. The second condition is that the plans include a legend explaining symbols on the architectural elevations, and that the applicant consider the addition of a horizontal band of windows on the east facade of the VVRC building. And again, the second part of that, in terms of any changes to the VVRC building, can be removed from the conditions if the proposed elevations are acceptable. The third recommended condition is that all sheets must show the enclosure dumpster location. The reference to sheet A610 must be included or corrected. The dumpster enclosure gate must be steel reinforced, woolmanized wood, so as to be opaque. The fourth condition is that any existing and proposed dumpsters must meet the screening requirements of Section 7.122 of the zoning ordinance. And the fifth condition is the notation that no new identification signage is proposed at this time. So that summarizes our letter and recommended conditions, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sloan. Any questions or comments right now? Then we'll go to Mr. Potter for the engineering review, please.
Good evening, thank you. First of all, I just want to point out that my colleague Stephen Clayton's here today. Stephen does most of the reviews, and I get to do the fun stuff up here. I pass out a letter, I just revised second sentence, we, in the package, it refers to preliminary, but this is a final site plan recommendation. For Sycamore Project, our letter dated April 5th, and we are recommending final site plan approval, subject to some of the comments that we placed. I would like to say that it's been a pleasure working with Julian, he's been very responsive and very descriptive in his responses. So as you review our letter, there's several conditions that they've already agreed to meet, and they have submitted revisions, especially on the sanitary sewer that was kind of shallow, we were concerned with exposure to frost here in Michigan, and so they've deepened that. So although we don't have the revised plan yet, we'll be receiving that, and then we'll be following through on those plans with the pre-construction package. So all the utilities are going to be private utilities, and we're very happy with all the changes they've made. So if you have any questions, I can get into more details if you wish.
Great, thanks so much, Mr. Potter. Questions or comments for reviews, for staff, for the applicant?
Hey, thank you.
Mr. Beglin, on McKenna letter, are we good with dumpster enclosures and signage question?
Yeah, so just to highlight, we've moved the dumpster to comply with the zoning requirement that's out front of the VVRC. We've moved it back behind the building line in a different location. Our architect is revising the gate design. Once we have that, we'll submit that with our plan as a supplemental drawing. They will show up in the VVRC building drawing application set, along with additional details for the building. So these are supplementary to the land development plan at this point, but we will, we will do that. Signage for the land development plan is primarily road directional signage. The wayfinding is part of the architectural package, so there will be additional, you know, enter here, you know, where people are supposed to do certain things will be part of that building package.
Okay.
And so, yeah, I believe, I believe we, we can say that we'll adequately address those.
Great. Director Akers, and that'll be a review that you all do? Great.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's do the landscaping question first, so just kind of see how everyone's feeling about the move of the landscape trees from Tyler to Hagerty Road, but still meeting our ordinance. Anyone have issues or concerns?
I'm good with that.
You too.
We're good, okay. And building question. Satisfy what we were looking for, what's been presented here tonight?
It does for me.
Okay, good. I think we're good. So then that would mean if, when we make a motion to approve, that we would have some of Patrick's changed language to be included in the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Let me ask, anyone in the audience who has comments or questions for this application? None? One last chance, anyone at the table? It's a really big project, we've looked at it a lot of times, you guys have been back and forth and been very responsive to anything that we've asked for, I appreciate that.
Well, and to the same for, for everyone we've worked with, with Township being very, very helpful, and we do appreciate that.
We're pretty proud of the team that we've got here.
You've got a great team.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, in that case, are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Boynton.
Move that we grant the applicant Julian Beglin final site plan approval for site development for a visitor and vehicle receiving center building, associated improvements and site hardening for security purposes for a data center use located at 9,000 Hagerty Road, on the northwest corner of Hagerty Road and Tyler Road, subject to the letters from Dave C. McAnally, Fire Marshal of Van Buren Township, dated April 3rd of 2019. Letter from Fishbeck and Associates dated April 5th of 2019. It says 2018, but of 2019, yep, with that correction, and also with the adjustment in the second line of the first paragraph to review, to reflect final site plan review. And also in the letter from McKenna dated April 2nd of 2019, subject to the recommendations of that letter and with the modifications of number one, as stated by Patrick Sloan. Do we need to have those repeated again?
I would imagine Ms. Harmon already has them. We're good.
Very good. And...
There's another change on number two.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And, and, and the change with number two, the adjusted, or the amended language with that, too.
We have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Jar, support. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, gentlemen. We look forward to a good spring, not too wet, and good construction season.
Thank you very much.
Next on tonight's agenda, item two, is TNT Fireworks Temporary Land Use. The applicant TNT Fireworks is requesting a temporary land use permit to conduct a temporary outdoor fireworks tent sale, location at 10562 Belleville Road. This site is located in the Walmart parking lot, which is on the west side of Belleville Road, north of the I-94 North Service Drive. And we'll have a presentation first by the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening. Chuck Freeze with TNT Fireworks. It's been a few years since I've been over, but hello to some of you that I've seen before. We have given some extra information to you guys in regard to the buffer for parking, and this would be similar to the tent that's been there for the last four years, this would be a fifth year, I believe is also notated in your packet. And I've given Ron an internal floor plan of the tent as well for Fire Marshal David McAnally, for where the placement of the fire extinguishers would be located as well. So here to answer any other questions, again, this would be to have an extra few days outside of the typical seven-day ordinance, as you mentioned, so just to get a few extra sales for the Fourth of July season.
Great, thanks so much. We'll hear the staff review and see if there are any questions that we need you to answer.
Thanks.
So Director, are we going to Ms. Stamper? Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the staff review is dated March 18th. TNT Fireworks is requesting a temporary land use permit for a tent sale of fireworks at the Belleville Road Walmart, 10562 Belleville Road. As the applicant just stated, the request is for more than seven days, it requires a Planning Commission approval. It would be from June 21st, 2019, through July 5th, 2019. And under seven, under Section 7 of Michigan Public Act 256 of 2011, local units of government are limited in their ability to regulate the sale of fireworks within their communities, but then the Michigan Attorney General issued an opinion that essentially says fireworks vendors are still subject to the same zoning ordinance regulations as other temporary land uses. So what follows in the review is a number of requirements per Section 7.12 of the zoning ordinance that the applicant would be required to meet. I'll just say right off the bat that none of them are really an issue, so unless the commission would like me to, I won't go line by line through each of them. But after going through all of those, it is our recommendation that the commission recommends approval of this application, subject to the three conditions listed on page three, which are that the applicant attains approval from the Van Buren Township Fire Marshal, which they have done, I believe the commission has that letter in their packet; two, that the applicant provide the township with a current consumer fireworks retail facility, non-permanent license prior to the establishment of the temporary use; and third, that all proposed signage complies with the zoning ordinance. As the applicant stated, this is the fifth year that they would be granted a temporary land use permit. Nothing major has changed, and there have been no big issues or concerns from previous years.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Stamper. You wanted to summarize, Commissioner Boynton summarized the letter from Fire Marshal?
He says it's fine. No, I'm just teasing.
Nothing to worry about.
The, from the last meeting, there was the concern of indicating on the map that it does include the 10-foot radius on the north and south side of the tent. Fire Marshal McAnally stated it had been unresolved issue in the past couple of years, and from what it views, what it seems like, that's been taken care of in the pack, in the packet here. So as of the letter from Fire Marshal McAnally dated March 14th of 2019, he does approve of this measure.
Excellent, thank you. So questions or comments for staff or for the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
From the commission? Yes, sir. Commissioner Boynton, I just had a feeling you would have something.
Just a couple, just a couple. For the applicant, on the list of notes on the floor plan, on one of the points near the bottom, it says merchant dice displayed within the perimeter of the sales area will not exceed six feet in height. Is that six feet from the floor or six feet from the tabletop?
That's actually from the floor.
From the floor?
Correct. Yeah, that's one of the state little guidelines. So like, on the interior, so let's say there was a couple of tables in the middle, that cannot be any higher than six feet from the ground. If those items are along the perimeter, the farthest outside tables, that would be allowed to go above that, but typically, we don't stack our, our items any higher than that. There is one package, it's like six foot one inches, you know, it's called the Big Bang, ironically, and it's really tall. That's a little bit large, but that would also be located along the perimeter wall.
Okay, and on, and probably on the floor, since it's already six feet tall?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Just a couple of suggestions I had when I'm looking at the floor plan here. Would it be difficult to have another fire extinguisher by the, well, on the diagram here, on the backside of the tent where there's a opening and no fire extinguisher?
Sure, like an additional extinguisher at the third exit, for example. Yeah, that would be no problem, sure.
Okay, all right. And do me a favor, if you wouldn't mind, and describe to me a flame break and the purpose thereof. Well, I can kind of guess the purpose thereof, but what's, what's, what's the parameters of a flame break?
Sure, is this in reference to the list of notes as well, on the...
Well, I'm looking at the diagram here, and I don't want to beleaguer you with another suggestion if...
Oh, sure, no, no, that's good. Again, a state regulation is that you can have 32 feet of firework tables, so four eight-foot tables in a row with a, otherwise you need a flame break, which is a four-foot gap or a piece of like plywood or drywall or something like that, that the ultimate goal would be is if there were some rockets or something that would be like shooting directionally, it would hit that break, or there would be a gap that it could fall into versus lighting other things that are in that, on the table space, sorry. So traditionally, this is also an interpretation thing, that if, all of our fuses are covered, so those would not catch fire, but that's ultimately what that's there for with the NFPA 1124 guidelines. In order, if something got lit on fire, that it would kind of slow down the burning process, that someone could get to an extinguisher to put out the item that did catch fire. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, because I was going to make another suggestion on regarding the table design and configuration.
Sure.
But I'm not going to, because now I have a better understanding as far as the parameters of a fire break.
Sure.
So we're cool with that. And one other question, by the register, about what is the distance, or what would be the go-to gap from the person at the register to the fire extinguisher? Are we talking like... Are we talking like two steps, an arm's reach, or... Best guess?
Yes, I would say two of my steps, maybe a third step for someone a little shorter.
Alright, good enough, good enough, good enough.
Yeah, it's within...
Good enough.
A grab reach.
So we're talking about within eight feet?
Yes, yes.
Fantastic.
Within that, yes.
Very good, I'm good.
Great, I'm glad. Other questions or comments? From the commission, anyone in the audience? Are we ready to take action?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'm ready. I'm going to grant approval to the applicant TNT Fireworks temporary land use permit to conduct a temporary outdoor fireworks tent sale, now being the fifth year, thank you. Location is 10562 Belleville Road. This site is located in the Walmart parking lot, which is on the west side of Belleville Road, north of I-94 Service Drive. For the record, please note, a letter written by staff, Grace Stamper, our intern, dated March 18th, 2019. Please notate her recommendations, and let her notate David McAnally, Fire Chief, letter dated March 14th, 2019.
Thanks, is there support?
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Jarrett.
Could I make a slight amendment to the motion, and offer the text that a third fire extinguisher be placed by the third exit on the plan? Or you? Got it. You, Commissioner? Thank you.
And you're supporting?
I do support, yes.
With the additional fire extinguisher, great, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, good luck, and please be safe out there.
Alright, thanks again for your approval.
Item number three on tonight's agenda is Bay Shore Staircase Replacement Site Plan Approval. The applicant Brighton Building Company is requesting site plan approval to reconstruct a set of stairs at the Bay Shore condominiums. The subject property is located on the township-owned property adjacent to the Bay Shore condominiums. We'll start first with the presentation by the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, my name's Kurt Harvey. I'm here on behalf of Bay Shore North Condominiums, and we're seeking permission to replace an existing staircase that services that community to the water's edge. Essentially, it's a rather steep embankment, as you might imagine, by, if you've seen the drawings, but it is to replace an existing staircase.
And the existing staircase is...
It's deteriorated, yeah, it's to the point where we feel like, they feel like it needs to be replaced at this time, so...
Great, I think we have a staff review, we'll take a look at that.
I'd like to ask a question, please, are you here as part of the association, or are you with Brighton?
I'm with Brighton Building Company, yeah. Yep. The permits are my name, so I think that's why it's been, I know that the president of the association has signed the Hold Harmless, because the township property is, I think the staircase technically is on some portion of the township property with the water's edge, right?
Right, to the high watermark, right.
Documents been provided.
We'll hear the review and then see if there are questions or comments. Director Akers?
Thank you. The applicant Brighton Building Company has proposed to move and reconstruct a set of existing stairs at the Bay Shore condominiums. This property is used for multiple-family residential, so under the Belleville Lake shoreline standards in our zoning ordinance, this property would be considered under the BLB or non-single-family residential standards, which allows for stairs located on the Township Lake property as a use subject to planning commission approval. And so that's why the application is for the planning commission. This is similar to an application we seen approximately a year ago, where the applicant had actually done the exact same thing on a separate set of stairs, so so the planning commission may notice, a lot of the review standards are very similar, I won't go through them individually, but just to kind of highlight, you know, in our zoning ordinance, we look at a couple different things related to the Belleville Lake shoreline district. There's specific development regulations that discuss stairs, lot coverage, any number of things, and, you know, just as a brief overview to our review of those standards, they have met those requirements. They're listed in the staff report. We also look at the approval criteria that we have in the township zoning ordinance for approving these type of any use of Township Lake property in the Belleville Lake shoreline district, which demonstrates that, you know, they can't, they shouldn't, shall not interfere with the adjacent property or owners or public uses, will not create a risk to health, safety, and welfare, will be constructed materials which should not impair the water quality, water flow, or water levels, et cetera. Those standards, which are in section 3.120F4, are highlighted in the staff report, staff had found that the application did meet all of those approval criteria, and based on that, staff is recommending that the township grant site plan approval for the applicant to remove and reconstruct the stairway to the water consistent with the provided plans. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks so much. Questions or comments from the commission?
Is the, are the stairs entirely on the township property?
No, 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 no. I think the way it works, and maybe Ron can clarify it, is the embankment is 25 feet or something, and the high watermark is where the, there's not a standard boundary per se, it's high watermark of the lake, I believe, so it's probably just four or five steps, I think is all that's...
Basically, the landing of the stairs are on the township property.
Yeah, yeah, and there's an existing, I'll call it a boardwalk along, that we're going to be terminating at, that's already existing at the bottom, that was done a few years ago, it's
Understood.
follows the water's edge, right?
For Director Akers, is there a specific parcel ID or address associated with Bay Shore condominiums?
There, it should be on their application.
I don't, I, that's a great question, I tell you, because this is about the 100th project I've done for Bay Shore North. And Mr. Management, which is, manages paperwork and such, is typically, things have been mailed to them, because there's no clubhouse, to my knowledge, at Bay Shore. So even when we look for, every time I submit for permits, because this is not the first one we've done here, when we submit for permits, coming up with an address is impossible, because it's on the commons area of the of the property, and it would be probably to a lot of people's in the future benefit to have an established address property, because I do, to my knowledge, there isn't one.
What do you think there?
There is an established tax identification number, just give me one moment and I'll pull it up. That is, let me check. So the tax, the address that I show as the address of record is 49206 South I-94 Service Drive? If you're right. Well, here, let me provide the tax ID, just, because I know that's accurate, so the tax ID for this property is 83-078-99-0001-004, and I apologize about that.
Good, good clarification, thanks for looking that up.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Jarrett? Any other commissioners, questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Alright. When can you start construction?
Pretty soon, pretty soon.
Okay, you're ready.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Please, no, please. Go right ahead.
It's my turn?
There we go.
I move that we, in case 19-010 Bay Shore Staircase Replacement Site Plan Approval, I move that we grant the site plan approval to reconstruct a set of stairs at the Bay Shore condominiums located at 49206 South I-94 Service Drive, with the tax ID 83-078-99-0001-004, the stairs leading to the township-owned property at the water, consistent with the provided plans, and subject to the approval criteria in section 3.120F, and the recommendation of the staff letter dated March 27th, 2019.
Thank you, support Commissioner Boynton. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, good luck. Be careful. We are to item four, which is Upland Homes Site Plan Amendment, do we have an applicant tonight?
It does not appear that he is here this evening.
Alright. Do we want to as we usually do, since we require the applicant to be here, have a motion to postpone?
So moved.
Commissioner Boynton, support? Take Commissioner Franzoye's support, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Alright, so we'll ask Upland Homes to come back at a future meeting. We are to general discussion in tonight's agenda. Director Akers, do you have any general discussion items?
Yeah, so I wanted to let the commission know that this is actually Mr. Sloan's last meeting with us. Mr. Sloan has accepted a position with Canton Township. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for, you know, all the wonderful work you've done for the township, and thank you personally for all the help you've given me over the last three and a half years, I really do appreciate it. You know, I just want to say congratulations on your new opportunity, and I wish you the best, so thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Patrick, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, it's been great working with the planning commission these last several years, the planning commission has done a lot of great things, has really improved the quality of life in the township, and there's a lot of great projects and activities ahead. So, it's an exciting time in Van Buren Township. I, I'm honored to have been a small part of it for a brief duration, but the township is in great shape, headed in a great direction, you've all been great to work with, and the same goes with Ron as the director, he's done an excellent job these last few years, as well as the Board of Trustees, and the rest of the township staff. So I thank you for everything over the years, and I'll, I'll just be next door, so I'll be happy to see you again in the future.
Well, I know everyone, we should do the best, I think everyone wants to say something to you, so we'll just go down the table. Joan, do you mind if I start with you?
Well, no, this was a surprise, to me anyway, that's what I get for being out of town. It was very pleasurable working with you on different committees, and you always had outlook that, that made us stop and think, maybe we need to look at things a little differently. And I'm sure you'll do well in Canton, and we'll miss you.
Thank you.
Well, I haven't been on the commission very long, but I can say that my time on it, working with you, has been a really great experience, and I know I learned a lot reading your very detailed reports and your analysis, and you've always done a great job to try to answer the questions I have, and I know sometimes those questions aren't as great as I think they are. So it takes a lot of aplomb to be able to do that, and I really appreciated working with you, good luck.
Hi. Well, we have certainly worked on quite a few committees together, on various projects. I have appreciated your candor, I've appreciated your integrity, I've appreciated definitely your depth of knowledge, and I know that I have certainly gained a great deal of insight and knowledge just from, literally just from listening to you, from a couple of the seminars that you have given at the MAP conferences. It, especially just to note one when they did the, redid the sign ordinance, that was, that was pretty much, it was iconic, the way that you brought everything together, and just seeing how you held the room, and no one nodded off or did anything, believe it or not, oh no, I mean, this was information that could get kind of dry. It really could, and Patrick had put his own little flair into it and just held everything together. And I just want to say that the township of Canton is definitely getting a very precious jewel with you, and I know you're going to do very, very well. Fantastic, it's been an honor and a privilege having you as a partner here in the township, and I look forward to seeing many, many great things with the name of Patrick Sloan attached to it.
Thank you.
Well, just to say it's been my pleasure to work with Patrick on the planning commission, it's also been a pleasure to have him working on our CDBG funds and taking care of all that for the township, that's been a tremendous help. I thank you for that, and your willingness to help out when we needed you, when the civic fund needed ballplayers, he was willing to come out and play with our retired tiger claw players, he brought his two lovely daughters, and he's just always been there to help out and join in, and I hate goodbyes, so I'm just going to say I hope we see you around, and thank you so much.
Thanks, Sherri.
I hate goodbyes too, everything they said, and one thing I want to be is more like you. You are so cool, I'm so nervous many times being up here, and this is a lot of information, but you're always so cool and put together, that everything they said, plus I want to be as cool as you, like, look at it.
You're the first person to ever say that.
Dave, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure, I'd love to add to this, you know, since meeting you, you're a true professional. This was a surprise to me too, I've been gone, you know, so, but I wish you the best of luck, and I hope to see you around. And you took all my cool sayings about a jewel and all that stuff. Actually, no, he's a great guy, wish you the best of luck.
Grace, I know you had to really whip Patrick into shape here, is there anything you want to say goodbye publicly?
Oh, I guess it's just been great to work with you, Patrick, Melissa and I kind of looked up to you as like the ideal planner that we should learn from, so we just feel like, what do we need to do, we'll ask Patrick, and you would know, so, it's been great, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll just say that in the years that I've been on the planning commission, I have not known us to export anything to Canton Township, usually we've sort of looked at what they had and said, how can we re-figure that to make it fit for us, so I am jealous that they have you, and I will certainly miss you, you have done a wonderful job for us. You've always been very responsive to help us figure out another way to look at something, a way to help an applicant adapt their thinking and meet with our requirements, and it's a win-win for everyone, and that's going to be hard shoes to fill. Thank you, Patrick, so much, yeah. Anyone, Mrs. Oxman, do you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Alright, does anyone have anything else for general discussion tonight, any, anything else from staff? Commissioners? Anyone in the audience? In that case, a little bit sad, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll take Commissioner Boynton's support from Sherri Bud, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.